We haven't announced any new deceased. Anyway, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Laval?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
Just a reminder, the deadline to file the annual Form 700 is April 1st. If you haven't completed your Form 700 yet, please contact the city clerk's office or go to FPC.gov.
Okay. Presentation?
Good evening, council. Robert Greenlaw. It's been, believe it or not, it's been two months since we talked about the Five Corner Project here. So, you know, I want to do these, you know, like every month and a half, two months, just to give you an update of what we've completed and where we're heading. So for everybody in the community, they'll know what's up when they're going through the project. So with the completed tasks, as we talked last time, we've got 85% of the cultural resource assessment. So remember, that was the Montrose contract that you just awarded there, and that was the work along the south side of Tremont Street. So what we found there was some sooty soil. So sooty means it was a burn site, came from a burn site, and it was about anywhere from six to 12 inches thick along that whole back of that wall. So we're thinking that something like maybe the Metropole Hotel, when that was removed, they had some holes, and they backfilled the holes with this. So probably not a really good idea in the future to do that, because if you've got to remove it, then you've got maybe some, you know, some cultural, sensitive cultural sites there that you've just disturbed and moved somewhere else, okay? And then we also got the storm drain pipe and delivery. You see the big pile of it. We're ready to install that, and it's all staked and ready to go. We started our underground utilities on the eastern side of Avalon Canyon Road here, right here next to City Hall. And we met with the budding property owners on Tremont Street there. So all the ones that are going to have on that northern side, they're going to have a new sidewalk up against them. We, with the admin here and myself, we went out there and met with them, and hopefully we've come to a conclusion that's going to be a happy conclusion for everybody. That will require a few minor encroachment permits, but they will be in front of council, and we're anticipating that's going to be in March, that we'll be there talking about the specifics on that for any of those that have a little more major impact than some of the other ones. And our upcoming efforts, we've got to build the new storm drain along Tremont Street through Five Corner and through the Five Corner intersection, continue the underground utilities along Tremont where we're doing it now, and then also along Tremont Street, along that south side where we're removing the overhead utilities. And then we'll install the frontage improvements on the north side of Tremont Street. So that's those budding properties that I just talked about. We plan, the schedule shows us doing that by mid-May, a block at a time, so that the contractor would get in there, demo it, and then replace it immediately before moving on to the next block. So we're not going to have the whole block torn up, and we want to get that done before the visitor season. So it's a priority for the contractor to get that done while he's doing the other underground utilities and storm drain. So once again, you can see that, this is the same slide as we had last time. It's, you have, the orange is the sidewalk, the new sidewalk. And I see I didn't get the orange all the way up in front of City Hall here with my crayons. So, but it goes all the way to, you know, the driveway of the fire department, the back driveway of the fire department. The yellow is the storm drain, and then the purple is the revised storm channel. The storm drain is going to be placed where you see that one stump next to the concrete head wall there. That's, it's about an eight-foot package. It's two 30-inch pipes that's about eight feet wide when it gets laid. And it'll start from about that stump, and then it'll go about halfway into that, where that head wall is. That head wall is going to be removed. All the whole intersection is going to be lowered, and that's what the object of doing this is really, to be able to lower the intersection, because the intersection has a concrete box culvert. So just a rectangular box that is really what looks like a sidewalk going through the middle of the intersection. That's the top of the concrete box. That's all getting lowered down. So when you drive the grades now in the new intersection, they're not going to be where your cart's tilting over. It's going to be flatter, you know, maximum 4%. And then this is where that revised storm drain channel is going to be wider, and it's going to have some shotcrete slopes that are angled, so it's a trapezoidal ditch. So the slides are a 45-degree angle, and they go down into the soil and cut off where their erosion could be. And then the bottom is going to be a grassy bottom to it, and that's for water quality. So if there's any, any bad thing, you know, say like oils or stuff that come off the roadway, that's what you, that's what mitigates that, with that grass. It hangs onto the grass and then naturally takes care of it. So you can see where the sidewalks are going to go again, that we'll be working on. And you can see on that north side there, on the upper side of the slide there, that's the one block at a time sidewalks are going to be taken care of. And you can see where the new storm drain is going to be under the sidewalk on the south side, okay? So it's going to be covered in concrete. And then you can see the purple there, that's the area where the new, the storm drain is going to be widened, I mean, the storm channel. And that's the end of the storm channel. See what else that I can say about? I think I got that, got that.
A quick question. The purple part of the storm drain is going to be open, open air?
Yes, that's where the purple is.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So you can see, we're actually extending it a little bit. We've changed the plan a little bit, and it's going to be about where the alley is. And that's just to allow us to be able to have more flexibility if we needed another entrance from that side there, okay? So we're laying about 82 more feet of pipe, okay? Okay? Any other questions? Okay? We'll be back in about another month and a half reporting, and you'll actually see things being built. And then this most important slide, so stay informed. Got a couple of hyperlinks there, and there's a QR code for anybody who wants up-to-date information.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thanks.
Well, the good thing is, is, you know, since it's just right here in the center of town, kind of, it's really easy to see the progress, so.
Yeah, sometimes you just wonder why are we doing things, you know? And hopefully I can explain.
No.
Why we move from one side to the other. A lot of that becomes because of weather or constraints like the cultural resources, that we have to back off that piece and then head over to another piece. It's just great that we have a lot of work in front of us, so we can do that without getting delays or claims from the contractor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Department head reports.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. We're getting a lot done this winter, spring season. We're trying to squeeze as much work as we possibly can before the summer season. The crew, as you know, completed the tow yard, which looks fantastic, and kudos to them, because they've never done that type of fencing, so it was a lot of trial and error, but they did it. They also installed new gates on Pebbley Beach Road. I'm sure some of you all saw that. They placed netting on Crescent Hillside. I saw that, that was awesome. And they did pre and post cleanup of Pebbley Beach throughout the last storm, which was great. They did a wonderful job. So it's been a really mild rainy season so far, which gives us room to continue working on many projects. Some of the upcoming projects that we'll be working on are installing new toilets, flooring in the Green Pier restroom, new bollards on Catalina and Sumner, manhole repairs on Clarissa, plantings on Front Street, and potholes, repairs throughout town, which haven't merged because of the rain that came. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I just have one comment. At our Rotary meeting last week.
Yeah.
The Conservancy was one of the presenters, and I know that earlier this year, we had done planting with them.
Yes.
Volunteers out of Jomichado. They were saying that one of the areas is where the kid, the young kids play soccer, and the balls go over the fencing and hit the stuff that you planted. Is there like a way we can do signage that says careful, caution? I don't know if you're aware of that, but yeah, they were saying that.
I didn't realize, I didn't think they would be able to kick the ball over there, but they do?
Yeah, but I guess it's going over something and hitting those. There's one area that's doing really well, but there's one that kind of.
This whole time I was, I thought it was the deer. Even though we planted deer-resistant plants, they still like anything that's green and fresh. Okay, well, I, yeah.
Which is something they brought up to us.
Yeah, okay.
Especially those people that were out, went out there and did the planting.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that was a great time. And I did go out there recently, and there's still some really nice plants that are thriving in that area. And I think as, probably next season, we'll see, and then it's really easy for them to grow that type of plant, the yarrow. So hopefully, they'll spread and not get too beat up by the balls. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. Last week, I attended my first, I became a member of the L.A. RICs Board of Radio Communications. First meeting was really good to learn and hear about all the, during the fires, all the usage of the radio and how much more capacity that they still had to go. And one burned over, and the antenna cover burned over, but they still had coverage. And they talked about how vital the three on the island were for the people on the coast to get the repeated back to them. So it was, it was a good meeting. Tomorrow, if you look out and you see a bunch of water spraying at one time, Long Beach Fireboats come in, would do some training with us and talk about ways they could help us during a disaster if they're needed over here. And that's all I have.
Thank you. How are the Eagles?
Great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members and city staff. My name is Sergeant Vince Durante. I'm filling in for Captain King. He had to do some department mandated training today. So I'll give you my presentation. In the last two weeks, we had 36 calls for service through the department. We also had deputies initiate 54 observations. If you haven't been explained what an observation is, observations are self-initiated activity conducted by the deputies. They conduct traffic stops, pedestrian stops, patrol checks of problematic areas and/or businesses. So that's what an observation is. During that period, we also initiate, or we issued two traffic citations. That was it. We also continue our enforcement on the e-dirt bikes, motorcycles, and e-bike issues. And I can tell you firsthand, because I'm actually in charge of the traffic, I've seen a huge reduction in the problems we've been having. And it's a coordinated effort between the city and us. It's really showing. I don't see any e-dirt bikes and very rare motorcycle. Still unfortunate, though. Within the two, last two weeks, we also had one arrest for a misdemeanor domestic violence. It was a local. That case is pending in court. And that's it. Nothing else I can present. Do you have any questions, Ray?
Thank you. I just have a question of the city manager. So the not riding the e-bikes and all of those things on the sidewalk takes effect when?
We will still, I think we just notice that again for the March 4th meeting. Is it March 4th?
Okay.
So March 4th will be the final reading.
Okay, so that might be something then you're going to have to help us with, once they can't ride those, all of those things on sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Thank you. Well, it's nice to see your face. Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, who's next? Harbor Department?
Look at them, look at them.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. We'll start off with probably what everybody's most worried about down in the harbor right now, float one. Hopefully be back in service tomorrow. We hope to get it back in today, but the vendor we used to help chain it in had a mechanical difficulty. So hopefully tomorrow, we'll be all back in service, and we'll have two doors to go out of on the express. Same thing with Barbara Pearson. That goes into production hopefully tomorrow, the next day, and down in San Diego. They have two weeks to turn that around, so hopefully within a month, we'll have that, that new float back over here and ready to be installed. So that'll be a big help. I've been working with Bob Greenlaw and Devin here on a plan to replace some pilings on the pier, so that plan's in progress right now. So hopefully this springtime, we'll be doing some piling work out on the pier and getting some of those taken care of. Training continues. This is training season for us, so we had two guys go off to training about basically utilities and transportation security, so preventing any type of events in those areas. So they got a lot of good information on that, and they're bringing it back to the guys. We also have six guys signed up for DBW classes in March and April. And last, and certainly not least, one of our guys, Scott Montgomery and his wife Martine, welcomed in a new baby daughter. I'm going to try to say her name with a Danish accent, because I promised him I would, but please forgive me when I mangle this. Sarah Hane Montgomery.
That's a beautiful name.
I know. It's sorry to me.
Makes you want to break out the song, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. So they're doing well, and Scott's coming back tomorrow. Mom and baby will be back next week, so.
Oh, wonderful. That is goodness.
No?
So do we, do we look at the, not just the pilings, but the surface of the pier? How's that going?
It's on the list. We definitely have to do something here eventually with that. It's a pretty big project to replace all the planks. It's pretty significant, both time-wise and, you know, financially as well. So we're trying to figure out ways to work around that and maybe get something that we can, you know, resurface it in the short term until we can replace all the planks. Also with the piling project, you know, we're doing, probably going to be doing the piling project in phases, probably one, two, maybe three phases. And some of those pilings are actually internal, they're right in the middle. So what we don't want to do is go out there and put a whole bunch of new wood on the surface and then have to tear it up to get to those pilings. So that's the plan, trying to figure out that. Definitely on the list.
I'm answered questions?
Good.
Thank you, Harbor Master.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just real quick, I think last meeting I talked on the December visitor-driven revenues. I did not add those to the website, and that's just another point of mind. I do need to start updating the website as we have our new audited financials as well. But just to recap from that, visitor-driven revenues for hotels and vacation rentals were down 6.4% for December, and for the calendar year, down 2.5%. On a more positive note, our admissions tax revenues were up 10% for the year. Generally, most of the revenues were up in the 3% to 5% with the exception of TOT. But more to come on that with the presentation of the audited financials tonight. So unless there's any questions?
No, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Madam Mayor, David Hart, Community Services. A reminder that the Community Service Department, in partnership with the Conservancy and the California Department of Wildlife, is doing introductory archery class for 25 fourth to sixth graders. The class is held on March 15th from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It will be held at the Middle Ranch Range. The Conservancy will drive them out, and CDFW will be teaching the class. There is 10 spots left if anybody would like to sign their children up. You can sign up at cityofavalon.com. A reminder also that Vons is hosting a vaccine clinic at the St. Catherine of Alexandria Church, February 27th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can get the new RSV shot, flu shots, hepatitis B, the Pravna 20, the Shingex, the TDAP, as well as the new COVID-19. Walk-ins are welcome. Please bring an insurance card to the vax, to the clinic. The vaccines are free with most insurances, including the RSV and COVID shots. Also, there is a 10% off groceries with every immunization.
Load me up.
I got mine.
Our prime timer group, next Wednesday, February 26, 2025, we are having afternoon tea at the museum from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is the dress attire's casual chic. And we gladly ask that each visitor brings a bag of tea to swap. We will have, we'll be touring the museum and creating a take-home keepsake. It's just $10 per person. Register with us at City Hall or at cityofavalon.com. We have an update on renovation of the skate park. We're really excited. Public Works, led by Roger Hernandez, has already prepped the site, has refurbished many of the skate apparatuses. The equipment, lights, basketball hoops, footsoh goals, the stenciling and dividers are here or on their way, and the work will be starting next week. So we hope to be close to a finished product by the end of next week on that. Councilmember Yessenia De La Rosa and I met with Mike Lansing of the San Pedro Harbor Boys and Girls Club to explore a potential partnership. We discussed collaboratives on programming, sharing resources, and developing a joint site. The final, the initial meeting was a fact-finding mission for both of us, as we share the same goals of providing opportunities and programming for our youth. Mr. Lansing will return on March 7th with the San Pedro Harbor Board Chair to continue the discussion, including a meeting with stakeholders to further explore this potential relationship. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Just a reminder, it's vehicle season. We're open here at City Hall, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30, and on Fridays, 8:30 to noon. Starting in March, we'll be open all day on Fridays. You can go online, cityofavalon.com/vehicles to pay for your registration. And while you're at it, if your name is on the blue sticker list, be sure to check with Rosio and make sure your contact information is up to date. The next update, Microsoft 365, as far as the rollout for Outlook and the calendar program, we're substantially complete and getting city staff and our elected officials up and running with that. The next phase of the program will include other Microsoft products, but that was our first main goal, so critical, so important. So kudos to Michael for that. And that's all I have for you this evening.
You finally turned into .gov.
Yes, that great point, Mayor Marshall. So all of city staff are now at cityofavalon.gov versus .com. .com emails will still come to us as we transition and phase over to this .gov. So yes, thank you for that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Rebuffo, Contract Planner. I just wanted to let you know that we are going to have our regular Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 p.m. in the chambers. We do have four items on tomorrow night's agenda. First item is going to be a conditional use permit, site plan, variance, and coastal development permit application for an interior-exterior remodel and new roof deck at Me Casita. So that's 111 Clarissa Avenue. We also have two applications up at Soul Vista, at 41 Soul Vista and 91 Soul Vista, for new basement digouts to create new living space. And then we also have a site plan, variance, and coastal development permit for two new dwelling units up at 117 Beutlow. So that includes one apartment and one ADU. So it's a busy meeting for us tomorrow night, and I imagine over the next, based on the interest we're getting in projects, you're going to be seeing more and more business at Planning Commission over the next few months as well.
I was just going to ask what the timeline is for bringing back the vacation rental discussion and?
March.
March? Okay, thank you.
And you said one of these is with, in regards to a CUP? The first one you said that's on the agenda?
Oh, so that was for Me Casita. They need a, they're getting a conditional use permit, actually related to the restaurant use, because they would be potentially expanding service to a roof deck. So as part of their ABC alcohol license, we added the CUP in there in case they are approved, it'll be able to get a modification with ABC. Thank you.
In addition to all that stuff, though, Kelly, are you guys, are you still working on the zoning, redoing, redoing the zoning and stuff in town?
Yes, we are. So we're still working on the housing package, because more laws came out at the end of next year. We decided to delay a few more months to make sure we capture everything that came out at the end of last year, so we don't have to come back to you for cleanup at the end of the year. So that should be coming back shortly. And so the goal of that first housing, our first package is really going to be housing-related updates, so related to new SB and ABs, related to ADUs, things of that nature. So density bonus, those kinds of programs, mandatory updates that we need to make. And I think depending on how that goes, we may come back with a second round at some point for further discussion of additional updates, but those would be much more city-specific. So we'd rather get the mandatory things out of the way and then come back to talk about any other tweaks we might want to make.
Okay, cool, thank you. And somebody asked me a question about first-time home buyers, because we don't do that program anymore, but we have a number of units that are in that program, correct? We have three or four?
I think one or two.
We have one up the?
Two.
Triana and one? Couple, okay. So if I, if I have one of those and then I want to sell it, I can sell it to whomever I want, or did those people have to?
They have, they have, when they bought, they signed on to specifics as to how they can sell it, how much of a profit they can make off of it. So yeah, there was a whole program that, I was on the council when we did that.
Right, okay.
But yeah, there's a whole program. They can't use it for vacation rental, you know, just.
Right, right, yeah. I didn't know about if they were trying to sell it, if they had to sell it to somebody who qualified, like they had to.
I'm not sure about that part of it, but they were, they were only allowed to take what was a fair profit out of it, so yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's all laid out in the terms.
Okay, yeah. Okay, just, thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just one update for the March 4th meeting. There's, there's going to be a few items on that, but primarily, we're trying to keep the deck somewhat clear, so the focus of that meeting can be on amendment to the vehicle code. So bring your vehicle code questions and solutions, and any issues you want to discuss on that. Jocelyn Francis has been working on it. We have Rosio's involvement on it, code enforcement. We're trying to really get a hold of this code and hopefully pare it down to something that both works for the city, works for the residents, and makes sense, and can be, most importantly, enforceable. It needs, it needs some work. So really, we're trying to focus that March 4th meeting on that issue. And then I just want to take an opportunity to, you know, address the Catalina Island yacht, or yacht club lease that we have. As council knows, we have a lease there with them that we entered in 2022, a long-term lease, but primarily their financial focus isn't so much on monthly rent, but it's on both funds that they contribute to the community at large and also to the capital improvements of that building. And I just want to highlight some of the things that they did in 2024. From the donation standpoint, 2024 Catalina Island Yacht Club contributed $113,000 back into the community, from, everything from Avalon High School scholarships, Catalina Island Search and Rescue, Catalina Kid Ventures, Catalina Humane Society, Guided Discoveries Inc., Junior Golf, and Friends of Avalon Library, City of Avalon Fire Department, and Play Preschool. They contributed to all of those, anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000 to $12,000 individually on all of those. And then also, they have an obligation to, and by the way, I just want to point out that that number is higher than what they're obligated by their lease. They went over and above that. And then from a capital standpoint into that building, which is our building, they put in another 228. they put in another $228,000 into that building by painting both the interior and exterior, replacing plumbing lines, underpinning structure fittings, repairing dry rot, termite, termite damage, and refurbishing the flag mast and replace the rigging on there. So again, you know, the amount of money that they pay in rent is a small part of what they're actually contributing pursuant to that lease agreement. And that's, that's all I have except one thing. Jackie mentioned a number of upcoming projects. I did want to mention one of those upcoming projects, which is a little bit of a pet project of mine, which is bringing the Sombrero Fountain back to life as a fountain. We're shooting to get that done, you know, so I just wanted to bring that out to them. Thank you.
The Attorney?
Just, you've received all the updates on the laws, and part of this big work will be on the housing. And I will be at the second meeting in March when we tackle the transient occupancy rental ordinance revisions.
Great, thank you, Scott. Councilmembers?
I'll go first. I, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to report out. I love my community, but I've been busy with other stuff, so anyway, there you go.
Just have a short, attended a couple of meetings with regards to knowing your rights, and will continue to share out that information as we receive it. And then just wanted to pass on a note of thanks. I know that we often mention thank yous for specific projects or things, but I don't think we can overstate how important public servants are. City staff, fire, sheriff, LA County. It's been, I don't even know the word to use. It's been something, seeing the changes that are being made in federal government with regard to some lifelong, some new civil servants. And the skill that each of you brings to your job, the hours and time you put in for the sake of serving the community doesn't often go well noticed. We try to do it as often as we can, and it is usually, for the most part, a thankless job. And you put up with a lot, especially in this town. And I just want to say thank you. Please know that we appreciate you. Please know that the work you're doing is a good thing. It's supporting a lot of people, and it's making the city function. And I would hope that as a council, we would make the choice never to put any of you in the same place that some federal employees are being put in right now. So, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Yessenia?
Yes, so as Dave mentioned, we met yesterday with Mike Lansing. We had great conversations, great ideas. And like he also mentioned, everything is fresh. But we're extremely optimistic because regardless, we're going to be committed to exploring different options on how to get the resources to our kids. So that will happen regardless. And then I have a meeting with Yamaha next week. I also held a time management workshop with the Women's Forum. It was for the junior and senior high school girls. It was a great workshop, and I'm so excited to keep it going. We did practice different scenarios that they'll come across now or after they graduate. We provided them with agendas so they can begin building on those skills now. In April, we'll be hosting an alumni roundtable discussion, so that is also pretty exciting. Also been in constant contact with all of our reps as well as our nonprofits so we can better serve our community as they need it right now. We do, and I see Gail in the seats, so maybe she'll mention this as well, but there is a date for the next Resource Fair, and that will be April 24th. And then the other thing, as I mentioned, our representatives, I did want to give a quick shout out to Clayton Hurd from the Assembly Member Loenthal's office. We just found out today that he will be moving to the City of Long Beach as the Government Affairs Analyst. Super excited for him, but I just wanted to do a big thank you. He's been so supportive of us, inclusive of us. And if anything new comes up, or if we happen to need anything last second, he is always willing to help. So thank you so much, Clayton. And that's all for me.
After all of that, I just want to say I totally agree with what Lisa said. City staff, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, you guys just don't get the kudos that you deserve. You do an amazing job. So I would also like to say thank you for all that you do for this community. And I'm sorry to see Clayton Hurd leaving too, but hey, bigger and better things for him. And that's all I've got.
Couple of Fridays ago, I attended the Long Beach Women's Shelter Workshop that they held with the girls. It was very fascinating, but it was talking about healthy and unhealthy relationships. But one of the best things they gave us are these little cards. And it talks about qualities that make you healthy and qualities that make you unhealthy. And I think everybody that's in a relationship should get one of these cards and just do a home test. Because I tried it with my husband, and it was pretty interesting. But it, but it was really fantastic. And now I hope they bring the same program and show the men, the young men at the school, the same thing, because it was very fascinating. SCAG was interesting this last week. There was, for once, disaster preparation and resiliency, which I know all of our department heads are on it. But Dr. Lucy Jones was there, and she's like the head guru of earthquakes and all of that. And anyway, a lot of the things, like resiliency planning and all that, I know you all are working on that and have a lot of those already in place, correct? Fire Chief? Yeah? Okay. And then there was the Mayor-Council Roundtable. And that was pretty interesting because it was a lot of new council people and mayors and whatever, and they were talking about relationships with their city managers and with other council members. And there are some cities that are in really bad shape. They don't talk to each other, they don't talk to the city manager, they have their own agendas. I won't mention the cities, but, you know, I...
We're not one of them.
We got it, we get an A+. It was amazing. So anyway, so thank you, Council and staff and City Manager. Okay. Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
I beat Paul that time. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a quick reminder from Love Catalina Island that this Thursday evening from 6:00 until 8:00 p.m. there will be our monthly Business Mixer, which is also a celebration with the Catalina Courtyard Suites, where we will have a ribbon cutting. The Mayor and I will be there to facilitate that. Members of the public and all of you are welcome to attend. If you have not already reserved your attendance, please do so by calling 310-510-1520 and letting us know that you'll be joining us. That is it, thank you.
Okay. Somebody's got the red scissors, and somebody's got some other ones. And the red scissors are dull. But don't we have another set, a silver set or something?
We have the red dull scissor.
Okay, and we...
And I, and I just took some sandpaper to them and took some of the old tape sticky stuff off of them.
Okay, but we bought another set. So we're going to need that for Thursday. Okay, thank you.
And I have ribbon.
Okay, thanks for sharpening them.
Hello there, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. So last week, there was a storm right on the day when I was supposed to have a very nice magician come. So he came out, and he had to go back on the 2:00 boat, and his show was supposed to be at 4:00. So he's coming out tomorrow. So come see us at the library at 4:00 for Wacko. He may not even be there, it's just I wanted to say wacko. But yeah, Wacko at 4:00 at the, at the library. Also, I think on Thursday, I'm going to have my now-patented ice cream book party. Come on in, read a book, get a free ice cream. I'll do anything to get you to read. We've started this thing, the LDS Missionaries have started a small ESL class on Wednesdays at 6:00 at the library. And Alex and I are piggybacking on that on Thursday. So if you wanted to come for the 6:00 class or not, on Thursday at 5:00, we do a pick-up conversation circle where you can practice your English if you are a Spanish speaker trying to learn English. So we do that on two days. LDS Missionaries on Wednesday, us on Thursday. So we're still doing that. Let's see, Everything You Wanted to Know About Catalina But Were Afraid to Ask with Chuck Liddell on the 26th. He's going to be talking about the history of the seaplanes, which I think is kind of interesting. And then I think about three weeks after that, he's going to do a talk on his memories of Packy Offield, which should be real interesting. He does some of these sort of personality vignettes, and it's really interesting, especially people like me who've arrived pretty recently but still are very interested in our history. Coming up on the 7th of March, there's another magician, Magic with the School of Astonishment. I don't know much about him, but I've heard really good stuff from other libraries. Smarty Pants Storytime every Saturday at 11:00. Play and Explore for Toddlers Fridays at 11:00. I think that's actually two minutes, even though I don't see a timer. So thank you very much for your time, as always.
Is there anybody else?
Good evening, Gail Fornesier from Catalina Island Health. I just want to give you a little update on upcoming. At Catalina Island Health, we have our next Community Health Talk, which is Understanding Diabetes. That's going to take place this coming Monday, the 24th, from 6:00 to 7:00 in this very council chambers. Dr. Amy Warren will share about the different types of diabetes, how it's diagnosed, how it's treated, risk factors, and how to prevent it. She'll also share some examples of healthy food choices and other tips for preventing and managing the disease. Well, every attendee will have the opportunity to take a free glucose test if they so choose at that event and ask questions. We'll have Spanish translation and some healthy refreshments and snacks as well. So if you can't make it, we'll also livestream on the CIH Facebook page. And then as Councilmember De La Rosa mentioned, I want you to save the date for April 24th. It's a Thursday, there's no cruise ships. We've, we've dialed it into where hopefully we can get everybody for the next Island Resource, Resident Resource Fair. Members of the community will be able to access vaccinations, assistance with Medi-Cal and other insurances, resources, mental health, aging, housing rights, immigration, you name it. We're getting, I'm collecting all of the agencies right now so we can get the word out in a bigger form soon. We're going to try a different time of the day this time because the first two we did earlier in the day, like 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. And so we're going to try like 12:00 p.m. to maybe 6:30 to try and get other people in the community who maybe couldn't make it to the earlier times previously. And then hopefully, when we do it twice a year, one will be more early in the day, one will be later in the day. And I'm thankful for the partnership from Councilmember De La Rosa, Assistant City Manager Francis, and yeah, you'll hear more from that soon. Thanks.
Will they be discussing childhood diabetes as well?
Yes, all of them, yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
Yep. And you have to come for the snacks anyway. It's like a good diabetes-friendly snack called Catalina Crunch. So you should come for that just in general. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, if there's no more, we're going to just take a small break. Because somebody needed to go. Don't all get up at once?
Since Gail was just up here, I texted her, I sent her an article that somebody sent me in regards to a change of management at the hospital in 1926.
Oh my gosh.
Renton had brought two doctors who ran a medical practice on the mainland here to run the hospital here also, mainly gearing towards Island Company employees, but was also opening it up to the local community. But it was at the old hospital over on Metropole. But it was, it was just, they've always been looking, it's just that, it's an ongoing thing.
Yeah, fascinating.
But it was May, it's May 15, 1926, in an article in The Islander that a friend of mine found and sent that to me, which...
Wow, that's crazy. Because, you know, giants, but...
Okay, we are back in Consent Calendar.
Consent Calendar, item number one, seeking approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Item two, warrants, approved total expenditures for January 27th, 2025 through February 7th, 2025 totaling $849,272.14. Item three, fiscal year '25 mid-year financial results and proposed budget amendments. Item four, authorization to provide onsite personalized services for the wastewater treatment plant, Pebley Beach Lift Station, programmable logic controller. Item five, reject proposals received for the GIS project.
Anything want to be pulled?
Just wanted to pull item three for a question for Matt. But otherwise, I'm okay to move forward with the other ones if I have any others.
You just want to answer that question and then we're...
Is that okay? Yeah.
Yeah, come on.
Matt, I know everything is looking right where it should be for this, and the explanation was really clear. My only question was just in terms of seeing a little bit of softening in the financial outlook, it looks like, for the next few months. I'm wondering if we need to make additional adjustments in the upcoming, if we need to do anything to make adjustments besides the amendments that are outlined already? If you're concerned about the budget shallowing up a little bit compared to where we thought we were going to be for the end of the year?
I think the only positive is we really didn't budget our revenues to, you know, even match last year's revenues. So there is some give, if you will, in the budget. So for example, TOT, our biggest general fund revenue, we had budgeted $7.5 million. Last year, we did $7.8, and we're trending a bit behind where we were last year. But even if, say, January to June is down 5%, we'd still be at $7.6 million for the year. So I'm not as concerned for this year's budget, but it will present challenges as we build next year's budget if our, you know, if we're not forecasting any revenue growth in our largest revenues, it definitely will present challenges. And we'll have to address that kind of in our upcoming budget. But for the purpose of mid-year and given the numbers we put, I'm fairly confident in those.
Okay, Council, at your pleasure.
I'll make a question to approve items one through five.
Second?
Moved and seconded, call for the vote.
All eyes.
Item six.
Okay, under General Business, item six is Magical Cruises Company Limited Preferential Anchorage Access. With this item, we are asking council authorized city manager to execute a term sheet with Magical Cruises Company Limited, DBA Disney Cruise Lines. And I would just like to comment that this request, the term sheet, sets forth really the parameters and what we're shooting for in ultimately bringing to council a port agreement. That port agreement will be the definitive agreement between the City of Avalon and Disney Cruise Lines. I am extremely excited that we are at this point, that I can announce that we're to appoint with Disney to announce this proposal. I want to thank Jose Fernandez and Beth Thibodeau, who are both in the audience today, who I've been working with for quite some time on this. And really, just to kind of hit the highlights of this, it's a five-year agreement with two five-year mutual extensions. It allows Disney Cruise Lines to have a preferred schedule access to Tuesdays year-round and Saturdays from September, mid-September to mid-May. It provides a guarantee to the city, which we've never had before, of 120,000 passengers in a year that they're committing to, whether they reach that number or not, they're financially committing to that number. In addition, in order to get this preferred, those preferred days and throughout the year, Disney is committed to paying in addition to the $7.50 warfage, which will be January 1st of 2026, is what it'll be. They're going to pay an extra $1.50, making it $9 per passenger for the Disney passengers under this with a 2.5% annual adjustment going forward. The anticipated number of voyages to the city is between 50 and 60 a year. Those cruise ships will have anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 passengers per year. So this, in addition, we have additional support that Disney is committing to providing design and engineering service... design and engineering services, industrial engineering services, which will certainly benefit the city as we head into this mole project, and also quality guest service training and operational efficiency training, which will benefit many of our businesses in town and will be available to all of them. I believe that this partnership is so important and beneficial to the city for a number of reasons, because as we look at where we're at with cruise ships, number one, we know they're critical to the revenue stream for mainly the harbor, but definitely the city. This provides security for us for five years with those additional extensions, with that guarantee that we know we can plan in the future and plan for these capital projects. The majority of the visitors are not during the summer months. It's bunched into the shoulder seasons in the winter, which is another common comment that I've heard. The ships are smaller, because that's Disney's model. It's not to go bigger. They have no intention at this time through the terms of that to go bigger. And this will not, the idea of this is not to increase the overall number of cruise ships we see in a year. We've been between 115 to 120. We expect ultimately, that's still where we're going to lie. It is simply to shift who we're partnering with and how many trips we're partnering with in a manner that both is beneficial to the city, the community, and provides us that security. This will decrease the overall number of passengers that come to the city on cruise ships. Now, the financial sting of that has been balanced a little bit by the increased warfage that they'll pay. But also, I want to point out that this isn't necessarily a financial move by the city. This is a move that is beneficial, I believe, just from a life quality standpoint, of the size of the ships and the number of ships that we have here. I think this long-term partnership with a company that's aligned with our beliefs and concerns as a city makes a tremendous amount of sense. So, again, I just want to thank Jose and Beth that are here, and if anybody has any questions of either me or them, we're more than happy to answer them.
We would like the two of you to come up and kind of introduce yourself and say a couple of things, Jose and Beth, both of you. You're two arms of the industry, so you should be up here as well. Thank you.
Mayor Marshall, members of the city council, city manager, we just want to say on behalf of Disney Cruise Line, thank you for this opportunity and thank you for considering this agenda item. Although our relationship with the City of Avalon has not been that long, in the few years that we have been visiting, it's quickly become a guest favorite, as well as a favorite for our crew members who do get the opportunity to get off when we're in port and take a little bit of a break from the normal day-to-day operation. As we're growing our fleet, we have greater flexibility from a deployment standpoint, and Catalina and Avalon, we're one of the destinations that we identified as critically important to our future growth, and we are just as excited to be here today. And we cannot thank you enough, we cannot thank City Manager Maestros enough for his partnership and support throughout the process, and we're looking forward to a very bright and fruitful future.
Put the microphone down for her, please.
No, again, I just want to reiterate Jose's comments. We are very excited to move forward, to look at those community partnerships as well, so looking forward to the next five years.
Great, thank you, David. This is awesome.
And one thing I forgot to add, yeah, just real quick, one thing I forgot to add is that the terms of this, because of the industry and the scheduling and bookings, it's scheduled to start in September of 2027. So, we have a run-up there, and we're going to, this relationship as we work up to there, that if approved by council, we'll have the final agreement brought to you hopefully shortly, but it'll, it'll really go into effect earnest in September 27.
Jim, we want to thank you too.
Well, thank you too for being open to this opportunity, and I'd just like to share with you and some members of the community a few more benefits of this future relationship. Disney has been particularly in, has really gone over the top in engaging multiple levels of tour operators. It's not just the two or three big operators that are working with some of our smallest operators, and so there's diversity of product and diversity of spreading that wealth. They're willing to continue growing in that regard. We had a conversation earlier today about some brand-new opportunities where they can maybe build relationships as well. Our retailers will tell you that the Disney cruise ship days are always some of their best days, so that'll be even better for our sales tax and for our economy in that measure as well. And as was alluded to, my term of art in my notes for it is customer service training, but Disney Institute being the flavor of what we want to bring forward to our retail frontline service and so on, so that's an opportunity I'm very much looking forward to working with them on, because that will benefit us not only on Disney cruise days, but on every day that our visitors are here and engaging with our, with our shop owners and operators. But most importantly, if it's not obvious on its face, the brand affinity for Disney, it's actually like having a badge of honor on our community, that we're a place that even a visitor who comes here on a Disney cruise day, who's not on the cruise ship, is going to hear "When You Wish Upon a Star," at the end of the day, they're going to see that beautiful ship in the harbor, and it's just sort of a cherry on top, I would say. So, just wanted to share those points.
Well, thank you, I know you were working with him a long, for a long time.
Yeah, and in case he's watching, I should acknowledge David Crey, who had these conversations over 20 years ago, and I did text him today to remind him that we were on the agenda tonight, so I think he's probably watching, and we have a debt of gratitude to him, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody want to make some comments? Jenny was sitting at home, and now she says cruise ship, and she got in her car and she ran up there.
And I missed some. So, is this considered a trade that we're doing, or are we staying on the original schedule of the three days, no weekends?
Nothing regarding this will change that original ordinance. It's still out there.
Okay.
Of three cruise ships in a week and no weekends in the summer.
And so, Disney doesn't replace one?
Well, ultimately, yes. I mean, like I said, I expect that our total number of cruise ships is not going to increase, that our expectation is still...
So, you still have that frenzy coming?
Well, for the next, I would say, 24 months, this frenzy is scheduled here that's already been approved. But going forward, there's going to be, you know, there's only limited days in a week, so if we have commitment, a five-year commitment with one cruise line for specific days of the week, it takes those out of play for other cruise lines.
So, I don't understand, then, when does the Disney ship is scheduled out of that week?
They have preferential, they have Tuesdays and Saturdays between September and May.
Between September and May, okay, so winter months on weekends.
Correct.
That, I mean, that is certainly a step in the right direction, I think, but the size still bothers me of the frenzy and the fact that it's completely overwhelms the town in a very short period of time, and I hear nothing but complaints about it.
Well, that is a different issue than what we're talking about now.
Why?
Because, well, because we're talking about Disney right now, and this is what the agenda item is. Yes, yes, there are complaints about the frenzy and those kinds of things. I don't even know if you want to address that, how those things are addressed, or is there a better time?
Well, no, I mean, I think anytime those, I mean, without question, we have to address those concerns and those issues while they're scheduled here. But, you know, the point being, I guess, this commitment between, and partnership between the city and Disney takes preferred days out of the week. So, is that going to impact other cruise partners? Yes, and we'll address that going forward. But right now, because of the cruise ship industry scheduling these cruise ships, the frenzy will be coming here as far as what's currently on the book for the next short period of time. But we'll have to address that of whether or not the city wants to continue to go forward with it, because that size of ship, yes, has been impactful to the community, and we have to address that.
Mm-hmm. In the original talks that we had, we were going to check the use of city services and the, everything from the water usage to sewage and trash, but I don't think that study was ever carried forth because COVID or something.
Well, we've done some of those studies, and I think the way it was most recently left by council is that we review that every other year and present that to council as far as the impact and the financial impact when we review the warfage fees.
Every year.
I'm trying to think how we, whether it was every other September or every September.
The reporting is done by the Finance Director and Harbor Master regarding impacts on an annual basis, but the resolution is only brought forth for reconsideration every two years.
Okay.
And Jenny, just so you know, the two Disney ships that are coming here, I don't know if you heard it at home, but 2,500 and 2,700, and they're committed not to go over 3,000. So, they're not going to bring another frenzy into the picture.
So, those two ships is one frenzy?
Right, pretty much.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Okay, comments, questions?
My main comment is just, I think, part of the instability previously was that no cruise ship company was ever willing to sign an agreement like this with the city, and it always meant that the financial aspects that are beneficial to the city and the community were always potentially something that could be pulled. The fact that this agreement hopefully will go into place means that that money is not only guaranteed, but it also gives both Disney and us a reason to invest in the relationship together and the community together, and I think that's amazing. So, I'm excited, I'm hoping that other cruise ship companies will follow suit. I think it means we're on a more stable landing when it comes to being able to fund the harbor and do projects in the harbor as well, so, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Then I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a term sheet with Magical Cruises Company LTD doing business as Disney Cruise Lines. Authorize the city manager to negotiate a port agreement with Magical Cruises Company Limited doing business as Disney Cruise Lines based on the term sheet forth in the approved term sheet.
Second.
Second. Moved in second?
Yeah.
Okay, call for the vote. All right, proceed. This is exciting for Avalon. Thank you so much. And Dave, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's see, item seven, Patrol Boat Four, hull repairs and paint. Harbor Master Schmidt.
You two don't have to stick around if you don't want. I know you're catching a boat. Oh, oh, you want to listen to Kevin? Sorry, Kevin.
Kevin is their ride.
Okay, make your affirmative finding. Sorry.
Before I get to Patrol Boat Four, I need to correct something. I mistake, I should have mentioned an event that's coming up this weekend, and if I don't mention it, I'm going to end up in hot water, or probably cold water. So, this weekend is the underwater cleanup, 43rd Annual is going on. So, you're going to have several hundred divers all around the harbor cleaning up Avalon. So, it's actually a really cool event. They get all sorts of interesting things off the bottom of the ocean floor. So, it benefits, I got my notes here, USC Harbor Barrack Chamber, the Avalon Rotary Club Foundation, and Avalon Beautiful's Casino Dive Park Improvement Project. So, that'll be Saturday. We have extra staff on for that as well, so hopefully I'm not in trouble. This one's Patrol Boat Four, so we took Patrol Boat Four over two weeks ago for an engine replacement, which we'd already paid for, and we got it over there and found out that there were cracks in the hull. So, yeah, that's not a good thing. We also need to do some work on the transom, which is the back of the boat, for those who don't know that. So, they have to do some work on it. They took it down to the boatyard, and what we're asking for here is basically, if we have to take it out to three different boatyards to get three different bids, the amount of money we're going to spend on doing that traveling is going to be far more than what this, the current estimate is. So, we'd like to, you know, so we, we want to get the boat back in service as well. It's one of our primary boats for this time of year. So, the quote right now is at $25,955, and we have the money in our budget right now for that.
Great, okay, Council, no questions?
I'll make a motion to make the affirmative finding that the city will not gain a competitive advantage by using the formal contract bid or other competitive procedure and dispense with formal bidding or other competitive procedures as outlined in Avalon Municipal Code Section 3-4.106.2, and authorize the city manager to approve an expenditure not to exceed $30,000 from the Harbor Capital Improvement Budget Account 10470-6781 for major repairs and refurbishment to be done in the hull of Patrol Boat Four.
All second.
Move in second, call for the vote. And I just want, oh, thank you. And I just wanted to say, I was supposed to make kind of the opening remarks at the underwater cleanup on Saturday, but I've been called off the island, so Councilwoman Mary Schickling will be there.
Okay, we'll see you there.
All right, thanks.
A side note, if Disney volunteers want to come out next year for the underwater cleanup, it's a great event, it's a lot of fun, it's good for storytelling. They have a volunteer program through Disney that may be interested in attending next year possibly.
And it really, it really is a lot of fun.
It's a lot of fun, there's some really great storytelling that goes with it for like best trash found, best amazing item found, biggest fish story, so, yeah, yeah.
I get that.
Can they pull up some really weird stuff?
Really weird stuff.
Really weird.
All righty, well, thank you. Okay, now they can go. Charles Sein, item number eight.
Item number eight, Green Pier Restroom Renovation Project. I believe, okay, Jackie's going to cover this.
Hi there. The Green Pier restroom has, is in need of dire repair, as we all know. We've been going back and forth on this and seeing what kind of scope we can do. This is going to be a hybrid project with Public Works doing some of the work, and then Jeff King Plumbing and MKS Specialty Finishes doing some of the flooring. Any questions on this?
When do you start?
As soon, we already, Public Works Crew already started on some of the toilets. It's been really interesting. They're seized because of the saltwater. The carriers are really, really heavy, so they were unsure if they would be able to do it themselves, but yesterday, especially during the rain, it was a great opportunity to try, and they did it. I'm just really proud of the crew. They, they were really skeptical of the, whether they could do such work, but they did. It was great. They did some engineering.
And why is there such a delay from when she's talking and we're hearing?
It's the, I don't know what's going on. It's related to, I know. Yeah, you guys are...
The background is really trippy.
Well, I know, but it's, but I can see her better.
Oh, yeah, there is a delay.
All right, and Council, Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to authorize city manager to negotiate and execute a professional service agreement with Wayne Perry, Inc., for not to exceed amount of $60,000 for site assessment, soil, and, oh, I'm sorry, looking at the wrong one. Authorize the city manager for the city's purchasing policy to execute an agreement with MKS Specialty Finishes, Inc., and Jeff King Plumbing to perform renovation work to the public restroom located at the Green Pier at a cost not to exceed $100,000 from the Green Pier Restroom CIP Fund 10470-6547, project number 247005. All second.
Moved in second, call for the vote.
All eyes.
All right, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Item number nine.
Item number nine, Mr. Greenlaw Professional Services Agreement for Preliminary Site Plan Assessment, Soil and Water Investigation, Corrective Action Plan, and Verification Monitoring for Underground Storage Tank Site at Avalon Fuel Dock.
Okay, we're back to the Avalon Fuel Dock again. We thought it went away when we closed it out, but as part of the project, we, we had to do testing with the closure, and so that was both the soil and water testing, and that's part of closing up a tank. And then, we backfilled... And then we backfilled it and put the concrete servicing because that's what the agencies that review that told us to do. But then then we file a closure report. So we filed the closure report and then that goes through all the agencies for a few months. And and in that report, it had all the the soil testing basically clean around because we grabbed samples all the way, you know, around the whole tank site. There was four tanks. But in the seawater down below, there was a little bit of hydrocarbons there. So once the closure report went from LA Department of Public Works, that goes and gets forward to the Water Board. Water Board wants to see that truly what the extent of that was. So what we have to do, the scope of the work, is to go out there and bore five holes 20 feet deep, you know, around where the site was, go take sample soil, take soil samples every five feet. And as we get down to the water, we also take water quality and then that gets put in another closure report. Hopefully, what that tells us, it's, you know, the extent of it is is not out there because that's at least what the soil grabs that we did out there. It was not any further out there. And that really what it was, was contamination just right down in the seawater. And so it's not freshwater and Water Board's usually more interested in the contamination of drinking water. So this is the site where it may be, maybe at this point it gets closed after that, but we have to go through this step. And so this will give us those activities to drill the holes, bring that contractor back over, and then also create a report that goes to the Water Board and then we can see what the further determination is. So that's what this effort is. Any questions?
No, thank you. No, council?
Well, since I started before, I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a professional service agreement with Wayne Perry, Inc., for a not to exceed amount of $60,000 for site assessment, soil and water investigation, corrective action plan, and verification monitoring for underground storage tank site at the Avalon Fuel Dock.
I'll second. Let's call for the vote.
All ayes.
Item 10 is an agreement with Los Angeles County for participation in Los Angeles Region Imagery Acquisition Consortium Program and Geographic Information Systems Services.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. So let's see, Los Angeles Region Imagery Acquisition Consortium, we're going to call it LARIAC. And for GIS, the city's geographic information system. So the LARIAC program is an incredible aerial imagery program. Google Maps does not even come close to the quality of imagery that we're talking about. It has participants from a variety of county departments, like the Sheriff's Office and LA County Fire, as well as other on-island resources like the Conservancy and SoCal Edison and LA County Regional Paneling, Public Works, really a great program. So every three years, the LARIAC program provides participating agencies with higher resolution aerial imagery, including building outlines and terrain. This imagery would be incredibly valuable to city staff, consultants, and contractors. City staff are recommending utilizing the expertise of LA County GIS staff to also modernize our own GIS program, which has been in place since the late 90s or early 2000s. This would include more regular importing of existing LA County layers and data, like those related to property and parcel data, as well as updating our own city layers, like those related to zoning, land use, public infrastructure, saltwater, sewer, that sort of thing, and creating new layers, which the world is our oyster, right? It could be solid waste collection routes, parks data, trees, building permits, short-term vacation rentals, environmental protection areas, and certainly use for public safety events, right? So LA County, the LA County GIS team, they were critical at updating maps during the most recent urban wildland fire for both public safety personnel and the community. So that's a fantastic resource that's right across the way. Another important facet about modernizing our GIS program is to have a public-facing component to it. So then that would allow property owners, our own community developers, to see applicable land use data or any data that we we want to share with the public. And so that really concludes my presentation tonight. Depending on what you all do, I'd be happy to give you updates as we get along in the process and show you some of those maps that we're able to create with this new new contract.
Questions or comments?
I'm kind of excited just to see overlays. Right now, the general plan has very broad maps that are included that could actually kind of go down to the house or parcel level of where those lines of land use and other categories in the plan kind of follow. So it's exciting, I'm going to, I'm excited to geek out on this. Not going to, yeah.
Well, and I know that Southern California Edison has been using it for two, three years at least, and it's it's an invaluable tool. It's it's a wonderful thing. So yay, we're getting, we're modernizing. So on that note.
Little by little.
I did have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Also, Jocelyn, I know that we've been working tirelessly to try to work with USPS on also updating their system so we can finally connect. Would this be one of those tools that will help us finally resolve that issue?
Oh, for addressing, you're talking about? Oh, yeah. So that's not included in this contract, but that's definitely one of the services that the same team that we'd be working with provides to other cities and and agencies. But yes, for sure, this will help out so much with that with that project in general.
Okay, then I'm in.
Yeah, and and, you know, the postal service, they will be able to see the maps and log in themselves and see all that that data, which is, which would be, which would have been really helpful, you know, in the last year.
Thank you.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with the County of Los Angeles for the city of Avalon's participation in Los Angeles Region Imagery Acquisition Consortium Program and assistance modernizing the city's geographic information system environment in an amount not to exceed $115,000.
I don't know who won that one, but call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, and for our finale tonight, Matt Baker with the annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024.
Good evening, council. To jump right in, just wanted to make note that this report consists of management's representations concerning the finances of the city. Management's responsible for the accuracy of the information and the fairness of the presentation, including all footnotes and disclosures. That being said, the whole purpose of the audit is to provide the user with reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Just to kind of hone in on some of those key words, reasonable rather than absolute. So when they do test, they don't test every single transaction. And also, when we design our own internal control frameworks, we do it with consideration of the value of those controls. And again, what we mean by material misstatement, material misstatement would be one that would influence the decision of a user of the financials. And so the the goal of the audit, again, is to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are accurate in a material respect. The audit involves examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts, assessing the accounting principles and significant estimates used by management, as well as evaluating the overall presentation. Dave Asfar is the city's external auditors and they issued an unmodified opinion. That's also sometimes referred to as a clean audit opinion, and that's for added assurance that the financial statements are presented fairly in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. So just as an overview for everyone who's reading the audited financials at home, it's structured into three sections. The first section being the introduction with the transmittal letter, org chart, and list of elected and appointed officials. The second section being the financial section, which has the independent auditor's report, and that's where you can read their opinion as well as the basis for their opinion. Management's discussion and analysis, and that's where there is kind of a narrative overview on how a reader can understand the financials. So it kind of explains what the different financial statements show and what meaning can be gleaned from them, as well as a summary of kind of the key year-over-year financial measures. And then lastly, it's the audited financial statements themselves, and we'll go into that in the next slide. The the last section is the statistical section. It's not audited, but it does, I think, provide really interesting data for users of financial statement. You can see kind of where the city was 10 years ago to where they are today, so the the financial information's given over a 10-year period. And if financial information isn't your thing, but you want to learn about the city's history, there's also information on top 10 sales tax producers, as well as staffing levels at the city over the last 10 years. So the audited financial statements are consist of the government-wide financial statements. And so this is what you want to read to try to get a general overview of the city as a whole. The two statements that are included in there are the statement of net position and the statement of activities. Reading these, what you're really going to look at is increases or decreases in the net position, kind of give you a general indicator as the city's condition improving or deteriorating. All the information is divided into two categories, governmental activities and business-like activities. Governmental being activities primarily supported by tax revenues and business-like primarily supported by user fees. The fund financial statements provide additional detail and have a more short-term focus. So the fund financial statements, when we're doing budget, we use reserve as the term, but unassigned fund balance is is really the the number, and that's where you're going to find that in the fund financials. For the proprietary funds, that's where you're going to see fund-level detail. So if you want to see how the harbor fund is doing or the sewer fund is doing, those are broken down in the fund financials and are grouped in the business-like activities for the government-wide. Again, notes to the financial statements is additional information that's helpful for the reader to get a full picture on the city's finances, as well as required supplementary information and other information. So some of the highlights for the year is the city's net position, and so that's our assets and deferred inflows minus our liabilities and deferred outflows was 45.26 million. That's an increase of 5.19 million from last fiscal year. And that 5.19 million is 3 million increase in governmental activities and 2.19 in business type. And we'll go into the next slides, kind of how we came to those figures. The general fund unrestricted fund balance, so this is what we usually use when we talk reserves in the general fund, totaled 16.19 million. That's 123% of the total general fund expenditures for the year. And the reason I highlight that is in the budget, we do have a budget fiscal policy that requires six months of operating expenditures for reserves. So you can see we have over 12 months, actually closer to 15 months, based on fiscal 24 expenditures. General fund unrestricted fund balance increased by 1.3 million from last year. And then revenues exceeded operating expenditures in the enterprise funds other than Avalon Transit, which is generally subsidized every year by the general fund. I did call out and go into it in more detail in a future slide, harbor fund and the solid waste fund still both have deficit unrestricted net positions, and I'll go into what that means and what we can do about that going forward. So this chart here shows the statement of net position. The bar chart shows the statement of net position over the last 10 years, and the pie chart shows kind of the components that make up the statement or the net position. So you can see we were kind of trending downwards, bottoming out in the COVID year fiscal 20. And since then, there have been considerable increases. And the net position this year is the highest it's been in the 10 years at the city. Net position is made up of three components, the largest component being net investment and capital assets. And something important to keep in mind with that is, is while that's part of the city's net position, it's not an asset that we can necessarily use to fund future expenditures. So the the infrastructure the city owns, land it owns, buildings, et cetera, make up that $45 million net position figure, but 77% of that is is assets the city owns that we need to provide the services we do. 15.9% is restricted. Most of that is in two areas. One, it's our housing fund where there's approximately 5 million. And then also the Measure H hospital funds reflected in that restricted figure as well. And that leaves an unrestricted net position for the city as a whole, making up that 7% of the 45 million or around 3 million. So I'm going to focus in on the governmental first. So this is taking out the the business-like, just looking at the governmental. But I'm also going to focus, rather than looking at the government-wide financial statements, I'm going to focus on the fund financials, as the fund financials is what we really use for determining funds available in the short term to spend. So this chart here shows the fund balance over the last 10 fiscal years. So you can see the fund balance hovered around, say, 5, 6 million for a number of years with fiscal 20, the fund balance getting down to a little over 4 million. And what you've really seen kind of post-COVID is a significant increase in our unassigned fund balance. How we've been able to achieve that really is twofold. Is one, we did make a number of expenditure reductions in response to the pandemic that we have brought back, but brought back slowly. But the second piece to it has really been the significant increase in visitor-driven revenues that we saw after the the lifting of the restrictions, to where we were bringing in those additional funds, but not necessarily using those funds to operate, which has allowed us to build this this healthy reserve level. So again, this kind of summarizes it just in a different way. The dark blue line represents the general fund revenues and the green line represents the expenditures. So you can see in 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, those numbers are fairly close to each other. In some years even, our expenditures exceeding our revenues. And so those were years we were spending down that fund balance or spending down those reserves, if you will. So you can really see in fiscal 22, we saw a significant increase in our general fund revenues. And while expenditures have been trending upwards, our revenues have been as well. The next slide, we kind of go into a little more detail. So revenues in fiscal year '24 increased by 1.39 million from the prior fiscal year. Really, there's two revenues that are driving that increase, one being investment income. So one of the benefits the city has had of building its reserves and one of the the benefits of interest rates going up is the city has been able to earn higher interest on those monies, and that's reflected in the general fund with investment income increasing by 900,000 last year. Intergovernmental revenue is the other big increase, and that includes the Measure H. So that's money not available for the city per se, and that's reflected in that restricted fund figure. But intergovernmental revenues did increase by a million. Tax revenues for the year did decrease by 315,000 or 2.4%. And then licenses, permits, fees decreased by 144,000 or 28.1%. Licenses, permits, there's a lot of fluctuation year-over-year, but this was a fairly significant increase relative to other fluctuations. But it is an odd for those to kind of go up and down based on activity in the town. And a lot of times, if there's one or two major developmental projects going on, that can really skew the the revenues for the year. Expenditures increased by 2.4 million. So you can still see revenues exceeded our expenditures, but our expenditures were growing at a higher clip than our revenues were. About half of that increase is attributable, though, to increased capital expenditures. Capital expenditures increased by 1.24 million during last fiscal year. Planning expenditures decreased compared to the prior fiscal year, but that largely has to do with some one-time planning documents, local coastal permit, sea level rise, I think, was in fiscal '23. So there are a number of planning So there are a number of planning-related documents where we use consultants. And so that's what's really contributing to that decrease. Public works increased by 22%. The other departments increased between 11 and 13.8. Some figures that I pulled out from there, labor-related expenditures went up a little over 7%. Or wages went up a little over 7%. Benefits, 14.9. But again, we did increase the city health cap during last fiscal year. The fund balance increased by 1.96, but that also includes the restricted fund balance. So that's going to the Measure H. The unrestricted fund balance, kind of the number we care about the most, increased by about 1.3 million. So last year, when we presented, we had a reserves, if you will, or unrestricted fund balance of, I think, 14.8 million. And this year, we're reporting 16.1. The next two slides show tax revenues by source. You can see TOT is our largest tax revenue. It makes up 61% of all tax revenues and a little under, I think it was 49% of all general fund revenues. The bar graph to the right shows over the last 10 years. You can see the impact from COVID in fiscal '20 dropping down. And then you can see kind of the significant increase, particularly in fiscal '22. But over the last couple of years, we have been declining slightly from the tax revenue standpoint. And that's really largely driven by the changes in TOT. TOT is such a big percentage that that's really the driving tax revenue. So shifting gears to the business-like activities, you can see they follow kind of a similar pattern where we were trending downwards. And then over the last three or four years, we've been trending upwards. This shows kind of where or how we're trending upwards. So I've broken it down by business-type activity. So you can see sewer fund, which is the green one, I believe, has been relatively flat as far as its fund balance. Again, fund, or excuse me, net position. And net position, one way you can look at it is increases or decreases over time, kind of let you know how it's performing as a fund. So you can see really the increase in net position is really being driven by the harbor fund and improvements in its net position. Another thing you may have noticed from the last slide is there are some funds that are in the negative as far as net position. So net position has two components for business-type activities. There is the net investment in capital assets, and then there's unrestricted net position. How you can have a negative or deficit net position is the city has significant pension and OPEB liabilities. Now, those will never be all due within one year, but they are considerable numbers if they were to have to be all paid within one year. And if you notice in fiscal '17, as the first year, you see that negative unrestricted net position. That was when the city started to have to report its pension and OPEB liabilities in the statement of net position. And so that's one of the things we're going to be talking about in future meetings, is things we can do as far as budgeting to kind of address those deficit net positions. And again, when we're looking at the budget and we're looking at reserves, say, in the harbor fund, what we typically use is working capital. And so that's the current assets minus the current liabilities. So we're not looking at the long-term OPEB or the long-term pension liabilities when we're assessing what monies we have available to spend in the short term. But it is important to keep those long-term liabilities in mind when we make decisions. So this slide here just shows a breakdown of the proprietary funds. So taking the harbor as an example, the beginning net position was 8.9 million. Had operating revenues of 9.5 million, operating expenses of 8.4, non-operating revenues of 783,000. Non-operating revenues would either be grant revenues or taxes. The harbor fund is unique in that it does have admissions tax assessed to it. And so that's grouped as a non-operating revenue. So you can see the net change in, or the change in net position of 1.88 million. And so the ending year net position was 10.79 million, with 12.9 of that being investment in capital assets and a deficit net position of, unrestricted net position of 2.1 million. So if you're looking at detail in the sewer, saltwater, solid waste, you can see that they were pretty flat for the year. That's not entirely by surprise, because we do set the rate schedule to cover our operating costs. But that's all factored in the cost-of-service study. So just real quick to touch on the deficit unrestricted net positions. So the harbor fund, which is the largest fund within the business-like funds, has a net position and net investment in capital assets of 12.9 million. But again, that's not monies available to fund future projects, because those assets are being used in service to provide the services to the community. So the deficit unrestricted net position of 2.1 million is primarily the result of net pension liabilities of 4.6 million and OPEB obligations of 1.99 million. Again, the net pension and net OPEB liabilities will never be all due within one year, you know, assuming the city continues to exist in perpetuity. But there are things we probably should be looking at to kind of reduce those liabilities to make sure we're fully funding, particularly with OPEB. So for pension, we are on, you can kind of think of it as a payment plan with CalPERS to ultimately close that unfunded liability. But there isn't a similar mechanism already set up for OPEB. So at a future meeting, we're going to be discussing things in the budget we should be including to make sure we're reducing those liabilities. And so we'll be discussing it prior to the budget. And then I guess my ask of council is, you know, it gets tough when we're looking at where to save money, and it's tempting to not set monies aside for future OPEB spending. And so make sure we are setting those monies aside. And we're also, I'm looking to update our budget and fiscal policies to include a section on OPEB pre-funding, to look for that in the coming months. Solid waste fund, slightly different, because it's not really being driven by pension or OPEB liabilities, but the deficit unrestricted net position is being driven by our landfill closure obligations. And so we do have a landfill closure obligation liability of 5.68 million on the books. Right now, in our trust fund, or at least as of June 30th, we had 3.29 million. We did do the scheduled rate increases in the cost-of-service study to close the gap. One of the side effects, I'll say, or consequences of, when we looked at the rates, we ultimately elected to raise them more gradually than what was proposed initially in the cost-of-service study. One of the advantages of that was to allow the rate payer kind of more time to kind of absorb those cost increases. But one of the downsides is it did mean that it's going to take longer to close that funding gap as a result. But one thing we are working on to address, and something that should be on council's mind, is to expand the life of the landfill, or the height of the landfill. Because by expanding the height, we expand the life, which will reduce that liability amount. Because the liability looks at the total cost for the closure and post-closure activities. And then it also factors how much of the useful life of the landfill has been used. So if we increase the amount of useful life and the amount of space, that in turn, from an accounting standpoint, will reduce our liability, which should also address that deficit net position for the solid waste fund.
I have a quick little question. So you make a bigger retaining while you put more stuff in it, but then that's going to have a life, I don't know, the lifespan. So then it would be even more, because now you've got to get rid of a bigger landfill.
You do, but you also factor how much time you have left to... So, yes, in theory, it'll cost more to close that larger landfill, but you also have more time to pay that. So then lastly, just to highlight it, because I think the statistical section is kind of an underrated section of the audited financials. So here is a 10-year breakdown of staffing levels at the city. And so it's color-coded based on the departments. So you can see, even with some of the increases, we aren't at the staffing level that we were heading into COVID. So it's just kind of an interesting way to kind of look at kind of where we've been and where we are as a city. So with that, that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions.
You did a great job, as usual. That was awesome, Matt.
Thank you.
And you didn't get into the little teeny numbers. Thank you. Okay, what would you like to do with this report?
I believe it's just a receive and file.
Oh, I know. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024.
I'll second it. Call for the vote.
All eyes.
All right. Well, I think that concludes our meeting. Good night, Tony. Meeting adjourned.
Who won the bet, Devin?